Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Can I have a motion to approve the present agenda as written? Any questions on tonight's agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We are in the first of two public comment sessions. This is an opportunity for stakeholders of Chatham's Central School District to speak about issues on tonight's agenda. There will be a second public comment period at the end of the meeting that will be open to any issues pertaining to the district. Again, this public comments for issues on tonight's agenda. If someone would like to speak about an issue on tonight's agenda, they can raise their digital hand using the button online. Raise hand. Or if you're here in the room, they can walk up to the podium, sign in and speak for a couple of minutes. So I'll just give a moment in case there's someone online. Do we have online attendees?
We have two online participants. Either have their hand.
Okay. All right, well, we will, we will move on and then there is another second public comment that will be open at the conclusion of tonight's business. We are. Something? Okay. We are into building and department reports, starting with our nursing staff.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce our wonderful nurses. We didn't need a moment to get them. Set up here. And I'll. You're good to go.
Hi, I'm gonna, we're gonna do quick introductions really quick. My name is Valerie Persons. I'm the high school nurse. And I have about thirty-seven years of nursing experience and twenty of them have been spent in Chatham.
Good evening, I'm Kate Giuliano. I'm the middle school nurse. I started with Chatham in January of 2022 as the district nurse. I've got over fourteen years of experience in healthcare, mostly working in the hospital and emergency and ICU.
Hi, I'm Ashley Fenari. I am the current district nurse. I started in September and prior to that for a year, I subbed here, floating within the buildings. And prior to that, I had experience in maternal and child services at St. Peter's Hospital. So this is my thirteenth year in nursing.
And I'm Mary Noel Fabiano. I'm the elementary school nurse. I have about thirty-seven years in healthcare also. Twelve years full-time here as the elementary school nurse. I subbed primarily for five years prior to coming on full-time. And I have experience in critical care, emergency services, and I am also a certified vocational education instructor, which I have not used. So. I know.
Okay, we'll start off our presentation with a quick question. Do you remember visiting your school nurse? If you do, you might recall leaving with either a Band-Aid or an ice pack that maybe you didn't go in there with. But in addition to Band-Aids and ice, we are giving our professional assessment based on our experience and knowledge of the medical field. Over the years, school nursing has changed dramatically. Students who were kept out of school for chronic illnesses are now attending and require more complex medical care. But what is a school nurse? The National Association of School Nursing defines school nursing as a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement of students. The NASN goes on to say that school nurses facilitate positive student responses to normal development, promote health and safety, intervene with actual and potential health problems, provide case management services, collaborate with others to build student and family capacity for adaptation, self-management, self-advocacy, and learning.
So we want to talk about bridging the gap between home and school. After a child's home, the school represents a second most influential environment in a child's life. And as more students enter schools with health and physical health and mental health problems, there's a challenge in trying to manage their care throughout the school day. So according to the survey from the CDC in 2019, more than forty percent of school-aged children and adolescents have at least one chronic health condition. That means that three hundred and sixty-seven of our Chatham Central School District students have at least one diagnosed lifelong health condition, which is greater than the entire population of our high school. So that, when you look at that, that's a lot of students that we are dealing with. And we thought that it's really important that you understand the role of the school nurse, you know, it's, like we said, it's no longer just Band-Aids and ice packs. We are an essential member of the team. And it's, of course, have an understanding of school nurses' role to ensure that we have coordinated care. Students can't learn if they're not healthy and they have to be in school to be able to learn. So the relationship between health and learning. Sorry, I got a little bit nervous. Is, is essential to the, to the district. The role of school nurse encompasses both health and education. The nurse, school nurses focus on making sure that every student has what they need to learn well. And that will includes providing preventative and screening services, which is a huge part of what we do. Health education and assistance with decision-making about their health. Ensuring immunization compliance against preventable diseases. And providing interventions for acute and chronic illnesses, injuries, emergencies, communicable diseases, which something we have dealt with for the last couple of years. Substance use, mental health issues, we do the process with those. And we serve a pivotal role in bridging the healthcare and education. And pre-pandemic statistics gathered at the MET alone, I can speak to those, show that we were on, that I had on average nine to ten thousand visits through my office annually. And over with all of those visits, over ninety-seven percent of them, I was able to prove that ninety-seven percent of those visits resulted in students being able to be kept in school. They did not always have to go home. And that is what we are here for. We want the kids to be healthy so that they can stay in school so that they can learn. So we don't, those statistics were pretty overwhelming when people think that. School nurses need to be physically present at schools to address their responsibilities appropriately. Improve student outcomes results where schools have a full-time nurse. Chatham has a team that includes a full-time nurse in each building, as you know, and now since January twenty twenty-two, there has been the addition of the district nurse, giving a fourth nurse able to float within the buildings where the need is. With this has proven to be invaluable, providing uninterrupted service. I have been able to assist all three of them by assisting with visits of the children that come in, providing coverage so that the primary nurse can attend meetings such as IEP meetings, CSE, 504s, child study, and wellness intervention meetings, providing coverage for nurses during their time out of office, providing coverage for field trips, assisting with state mandated screenings, physicals, and management of all data entry, and assist with management of care during the pandemic that has been going on. I will say too, just being here a few months, what I have seen, and I was telling Mary Noel this. Classrooms succeed when you have a teacher and assistants, whether it's a one-on-one and a teacher's aide. And I do feel that with the addition of a fourth nurse, every child who comes in is able to be seen immediately and not late. And proper care and adequate care is given to our full potential, just because there's that extra set of hands. It's just a graphic to show. So we wanted to just divide this, what we do up into the seven core roles that a school nurse fulfills to foster childcare and adolescent health and educational success, according to the National Association of Nurses. The first being that we provide direct care to students. That's the leadership or the provision of health services. Provide screening and referral for health conditions, promote healthy school environment, promoting health in general. Serve in a leadership role for health policies and programs. And act as a liaison to the school personnel, family, healthcare professionals, and the community.
The next couple of slides are just some things that we do do during the school day, you know, we take care. We do a lot of communicating with doctors' offices, we do a lot of communicating with parents, we do a lot of communicating with people that you don't think, like the athletic trainer that comes in to take care of our students during sports. He's always texting me saying, hey, will you check in on so-and-so? He had a little bit of a tweak last night, so we do a lot of communicating like that. So this list of things that is very minute compared to what we actually do. COVID testing has been a big thing. We make health plans and we communicate with the teachers a lot for the kids that have any kind of medical issue. And we make sure that they have everything they need if they go on a field trip, because there are students who need to take medications with them when they go on field trips. Watching, monitoring, communicating with, again, parents and staff members and administration. You know, if we need things, we have to communicate with administration and say, hey, this is what we need, this is why we need it, this is where we want to put it. We're doing that with some AEDs right now because I, we think we need a couple more AEDs in strategic places in the schools. The next page has some more things that we do, like I said, the field trip roster so that the staff is ready to take them. We make sure they're trained with EpiPeds and we make sure they're trained with Glucagon on a stable diabetic patient. We make sure that they know what to do in the case of a kid who has a seizure if they're on a field trip. If that student ever, if any of those students ever needed medication that the laypeople, being our teachers, can't give, then one of us has to go on that field trip. And we've done that a few times already this year. And having the fourth nurse, I'm telling you, if I have to go on a field trip and I have to go with a student who is having any kind of a medical issue and I have to take medication, knowing my office can be covered is, or, or I can send Ashley on the trip, I stay in the office and she covers the student that goes on the field trips. Honestly, if we couldn't send a nurse on a field trip with a student who needed medication, we make them cancel the field trip because it's not safe for the kids to, to go on that trip. We keep up on physical exams, physical education in injuries and sports. And again, I have worked in this community quite a long time. Mary Noel's right across the border, did a lot of her work in Massachusetts. We know a lot of the doctors. I can speak specifically orthopedically. My husband worked for an orthopedic group in Albany. I would refer kids and have them seen and get them in quicker than usual just because I had that connection. And I think with the experience that we have, that works in our favor quite a bit. And again, leadership and health services, I mean, we really work as a team. I don't think any of us has any more knowledge than the one before. And quite frankly, during the whole COVID thing, when we were at home making phone calls and stuff, I would email Mary Noel and say, I don't know which way to, direction to go on this one. We use each other as sounding boards all the time. Stayed up with Department of Health meetings, communications with them to stay on top of all the changes that are happening, especially right now. Not only COVID, but now we've got polio cases in the state, we've got cases of monkeypox. We need to stay on top of all of this communicable disease stuff. So we, we do a lot of communicating and learning from outside agencies.
One of the major things that we do is provide health screenings to decrease the negative effects of health problems on education by identifying students with potentially underlying medical problems early and referring them for treatment as appropriate. New York State has many mandates for the health services. We, they, we have to make sure that they have vision and hearing and scoliosis screenings. Pre-K, K, one, three, five, seven, and eleven, all, and all new entrants have to be screened. Each screening requires that not only do we do the screening, but we have to provide a written report to the parents, whether they have a normal exam or if they need help. So that's a huge undertaking. We have to ensure compliance with New York State mandates for physicals also. And again, those are pre-K, K, one, three, five, seven, nine, eleven. And then you need to follow up with parents and physicians to ensure compliance. You have to log all of that data into their medical health records. We have a paper record. And then we also have to put it into our school tool systems. There is a very small health section that we put in, in there also. So there's a lot of extra paperwork where that is concerned. And then we also have to do New York State immunization audits and sometimes BMI surveys, which actually we are in the process that I think, I think we hit sent today or tomorrow on our New York State, on our New York State immunization survey. So I can speak just from the MET standpoint. Five out of the seven grade levels, so seventy percent of my students in my building are mandated for physicals and for hearing and scoliosis screening. So this year alone, I've already, with the addition of having a nurse, another nurse with me, it has proven invaluable. We have, the state gives us six months to perform all of our vision and hearing screenings, which would bring us through till February. You know, to be able to get them done. But the problem is you have a child who has a vision issue and we wait till, if I can't get to them until February, they've gone all that time without, with some sort of deficit. I've already completed everyone except for fifth grade right now. And with that, I've identified twenty-seven children that have vision issues and need to be followed up. And I already have ten of those twenty, twenty-seven that have been prescribed glasses where they didn't have them before. So we've been able to catch them earlier. So again, having the fourth nurse is so helpful because it takes me that much longer to get through those, you know, seventy percent of my school population. So it's, it's absolutely a benefit, beneficial having her with us, so.
All right, the school nurse promotes a healthy school environment. We provide physical and emotional safety of school community by monitoring immunizations, excluding as appropriate for infectious diseases and reporting communicable disease as required by law. We monitor illness trends for COVID, RSV, influenza, polio. We perform daily monitoring and compliance with CDC COVID-19 guidelines and quarantine for positive cases. We participate in virtual Department of Health and tri-county nursing meetings, both during and after school hours.
So we just threw in some numbers of pandemic overview. The crux of it was twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We're kind of toward the end, although we are still doing some testing in the schools of both students and staff. But this was the big, the big crunch during the height of COVID, I guess you could say. And in an effort to get the kids back to somewhat of a normal lifestyle, we really wanted to get the sports thing. And thank God I have the coworkers I have pitched in and helped every day after school when we did sports. And that was the year that we did all of our sports between January and June. We even, even football was in there a little bit. And during that period of time, we did over seven hundred and eighty tests just for the winter, the sports alone in twenty twenty-one from June, January to June. Along the same time, we were still doing testing in school where we did another six hundred plus tests. And then we had the actual positive cases, the paperwork that we could gather and re look at the numbers. You can see the, the numbers of positive cases that we had in the buildings. And of course, MED being the highest because that's the highest population we have. And those kids, it's difficult to keep them separated. Although I'm saying high school is difficult to keep them separated sometimes too. But, um, but this is kind of a synopsis of what we actually did during the height of COVID. Now we're sort of on the backside of it at this point.
The school nurse provides health education to individuals and groups of students. We give annual and as-needed staff training for medical conditions such as anaphylaxis and diabetes, which includes EpiPen and Glucagon certification. We offer medical advice as part of a team approach for students re-entering school following extended medical absence, even extended absence not due to medical reasons. We facilitate and assist with staff vaccination clinics. As a healthcare expert within the school system, the school nurse is a leader in development and evaluation of school health policies. Policies such as chronic disease management, school wellness policies, crisis and disaster management, mental health protection and intervention, infectious disease prevention and management.
Again, sort of acting as a liaison with the very myriad of people that we have to stay in touch with. Parents and doctors and administration in our building and the other buildings. Making sure that the kids are taken care of to the best of our ability while we have them in our buildings. I think we just, again, communication is huge all the way around, so that's, that's the liaison part of this, so.
You met all of us at the beginning, but just wanted to kind of end with, you're CCSD school nurses. We have over a pretty impressive, over a hundred years of combined experience in, in one form or another in the healthcare setting. And we all have expertise in a variety of things. We're committed to our students and their well-being. We hope that this presentation has provided a better understanding of the important role that we play in the educational setting. It's a whole different type of nursing being, being a school nurse as opposed to being in a hospital. But we are an integral part of the school community. We show up every day to play a part shaping our children's futures and thank you for the opportunity to let us speak and kind of give you an update on what the, the school nurse role is now, not just Band-Aids and ice packs.
Well, thank you for that overview. I, I think. Do you guys have questions? I don't think we've had a nursing department report before, right? So, yeah, and not just necessarily about that presentation, but, you know. We, we actually talk about health services all the time without you around, so.
Thank you for the very informative report. There was one slide up that I didn't write down, trying to remember that question, but one I did write down. You, you mentioned towards the end about the emergency medications. And I just wondered if you can give an example of what one might be in a situation as to why that would be necessary.
Yep, we keep on, we keep, in our offices, we all have EpiPens. Our diabetics carry Glucagon, which is a low-sugar rescue medicine. And our seizure kids have anti-seizure medication. So those are what we consider our emergency medicines. So for example, someone with a peanut allergy somehow gets a hold of a peanut and they start to have difficulty breathing. They start to break out hives. The rescue medicine that we can give them is the EpiPen, which reverses the reaction for somewhere between fifteen and thirty minutes. And in that timeframe, it gives us the ability to call 911 and have a higher level of care, get to the place where they need to be so that they can take care of that student and take them to the hospital.
And that's something a nurse is actually, not another.
We can train our staff to give EpiPens. That New York State Education Department has given us the opportunity to train our staff on EpiPens and on, there is a nasal spray for our diabetics to use as a low-sugar rescue now. And we can train our staff on those as well. Anything else that has to be given by us, anything for seizure purposes, anything, we do have kids that have like are asthmatics with their debulizers, that has to be given by a nurse as well. So there are a few things that we cannot train our staff to do.
Well, we're passing the mic. About a week ago, Monday, we, the administrators and the nurses also received Narcan training and also some education in terms of providing that as an emergency, you know, treatment. And, and learned about the fact that overdoses aren't just based on illicit drugs that sometimes just drug interactions. And overdoses can happen hours after the drug is actually taken or administered. So it's not inconceivable that a, a student and/or staff member could come to work and experience an overdose. And now I'm feeling a lot better about our ability to administer Narcan. We all received Narcan kits and we're going to bring, be bringing that training to the larger staff in upcoming trainings in the spring.
Thanks, I was actually going to ask about that. So we, we have naloxone in all three buildings, is that right?
Yes, administrators in all three buildings have naloxone. The, the problem with naloxone in the general is that in our job capacity here at school, we cannot administer a medication without a physician's order. We're just waiting on the final physician's order for the naloxone, Narcan, for us to be able to give it.
So, so currently, short of having a paramedic or a doctor on the phone during a 911 interaction, you would not be able to administer that.
As the nurses in the building, we would not, but we certainly can grab our administration. What we would do.
Working on the, our medical director, he needs to provide a nonspecific patient order. We're working on getting that in place. We're working with the Department of Health who provided us the training as to an alternate of that. All the administrators under the Good Samaritan law can, can administer it immediately.
Okay, so we're, we're, we've already sent that request out to our physicians.
Yeah, I sent it.
Yes, we're working on it.
Great.
And you, incidentally, Pat's not here, but we have, we've had longstanding policies in place. They go back to Cheryl, who put the policies in place to allow us to be positioned to have taken advantage of all that.
So you have kids that are located in the administration officer area or they're in the nurses?
We're working on that now, so all, all of the, I believe almost everyone who went through the training opted to take a kit with them. We envision, we envision not only, like mine is on my bulletin board and within reach of, of my office. We've talked about strategic locations within the building that would be secure, where you would be able to access them. And I don't want to disclose that just yet.
No, that's fine. Do you guys have, we can move on from this one, maybe.
So I actually had a, I was gonna ask a question similar to this. Around the drugs and Narcan, sort of thing. Are you, are you, so this one, should I slide the leadership role in healthcare and health programs? There's a lot in here and it's great to see that you're involved, but I don't see as policy around emergency drug intervention. Are you consulted? Are you part of the conversation? Or where's this coming from? Or is the administration making solely these decisions? So like I see, you know, your, these policies include promotion, protection, chronic disease management, coordinated, but not about drug intervention or drug prevention or those sorts of things.
Are you asking about standard of care or protocol?
Yeah, well, so it says as a healthcare, you're within the school system, the school nurse is a leader in development and evaluation of school health policies. The policy I don't see is the one about, that, that's about drugs or emergency drug interventions or any.
So a lot of those policies, like Sal said, were put in place a while back. And we do periodically review that type of stuff. If there's any changes to be made, it's not really, because those tend to be super generic so that they can be used for all the drugs that we have. So what we have then are those protocols and what we write as in individual healthcare plans for each of our students. So each student who has an emergency drug that we know of has a health plan that we share with people. But for, say, if we were at a basketball game and somebody. But for, say if we were at a basketball game and somebody collapsed and we were, and we were thinking that, so it would be on whoever the administrative person is there, anybody in the crowd. We do not, we're not obligated to go, we do attend some of the games.
I know you can't administer it based on the articulation that Sal just gave. My question is, are you, are you at the table when the protocols, when, so like when the training occurs? Like how much involvement does our medical staff have in carrying our system response?
Probably not as much, as much as we should or would like. I know that a lot of times Sal will come to us and say, hey, we've looked at this, we've done this, look it over, tell me what you think. We've done a lot of that, especially through the COVID piece of things. We would love to be in on some of that stuff. I also think that some of the after-school stuff sort of falls on the administrator that happens to be there, the athletic director, and quite frankly, the coaches that are there. And that is one of the conversations we've had about making sure that our coaches and our athletic director also get the Narcan training. They're all CPR and AED certified, they have to be to coach. And those are accessible. And one of our conversations is how do we make the other stuff that they need accessible? We are talking about it, we're not necessarily at the roundtable, but we do have it pointed to that stuff.
I just want to offer a little bit of clarification. We have not had the necessity to develop any newly created policies. If we were to do that, these ladies would certainly be involved in that process. What we have, what we've experienced with them is, and again, Pat not being here, is our standard operating procedure for reviewing a policy, which is to start with looking at the policy and Marianne is on the policy committee and taking it back and making sure that the policy reflects current practice. And that's where I, we would be remiss not to have people in the field taking a look at that. If it was an administrative policy, the administrators may look at it. If it's a health policy, the healthcare professionals look at it. So they're informing that process, but we haven't, since I've been here, we haven't had the need to, to develop a specifically new health policy.
Sal and/or anyone else who wants to answer this, could we take a minute to sort of zoom out? Like to like the mile high level and just maybe give the board of an understanding of what types of policy or care or emergency decisions would be under the purview of our nursing staff versus any instructional or non-structural staff, you know, just as an adult in the building, being an employee versus our instructions we're getting from health versus the state versus, I understand, medical chain of command goes up to Albany in some situations. I think maybe there's some fuzzy lines here from the perspective of the board. But I, I think some of these emergency situations aren't necessarily under the purview of, of the nurses, particularly when we think about, well, this thing happened after school and they're not here, right? In the case of a sporting event or something like that, where.
I, I, I'm going to start with a 30,000 foot view because we have licensed professionals and props and they're, they're, they're bound by their, you know, that, that.
Very, just very broad strokes, right?
Obviously, I'm going to state the obvious. We, we have somebody who slipped in front of us at the basketball game the other night, right? So we're kind of at the, at the mercy of any emergency medical personnel who are in the audience or just good judgment. But at the end of the day, the first thing anybody should do is call 911, right? And, and then, and then to the best of our ability as administrators to provide whatever oversight or management of the situation that we can. I, that may not be a specific, not the answer.
What I'm asking is, the circumstance that you just brought up, you know, it's the question is, is this, is this a nursing department situation? When would it be a nursing department situation that they would even have any influence in protocol or policy? Or is this an emergency, an emergency, but this is not a hospital facility, right?
No, so I think if you, my, my question was just more, not 30,000, but maybe five. When we talk about things like, you know, emergency preparedness, which is in here, you know, how much voice do the medical professionals have in, in how we would operate under those circumstances? You know, an emergency could be, you know, something catastrophic like a fire or something like that, but also something more common than banal, like somebody slips and falls or, or you know, somebody comes into a basketball game after using, you know, and, and has an episode, you know, like I just think that, like I don't want to be, I would not want, if I was an administrator here, I would not want to be at that scene without having heard from people what I'm supposed to be doing at that point in time.
So I, I have a question maybe surrounding this, I was saying about it before is, is, you know, as a nursing staff, as professionals in district buildings, I assume that your, your comfort umbrella is typically operate, you know, like it's kind of here. And if an emergency happens, obviously you're, you know, if it happens during school or, you know, during day or part of it. But what I'm unclear about, and I don't know if it could be actually articulated, is, you know, at what point does outside medical emergency 911, how does that, how does that overlap? Like when, when can you like say, okay, this is, you know, we have to end this off, this is not our.
I think that, you know, I mean, if it's during school hours, I mean, we are trained and we are licensed professional nurses who have been trained to treat what we can and to be able to do an assessment, assess patients and figure out whether or not they need emergency care. I mean, I will say that, I mean, I have called 911 numerous times. I will do what I can to do an assessment and make an informed decision as to whether or not I need, you know, to get more help. So sometimes it's just a matter of, okay, a child falls, they hurt themselves, they're not in major distress. But I think, you know what, I think he may possibly have, he or she may have fractured their arm. I'm going to provide emergency care that I can, call the parent, get the parents, take the child out. If they can't, then I'm going to call 911. So we have that ability, you know? So that is part of our training is to be able to recognize those emergency situations. And I know within 12, 17 years even of subbing, I, even when I subbed, I, I had to call for an ambulance. So we've all had to do that at one point or another. That's part of what we, that's one of the main things that we do here is we're here to assess, make an informed decision of medical judgment as to whether or not this child or adult, I respond to.
Call on adults too.
We call on, I think I probably made honestly more, more 911 calls for adults, staff, visitors that have come into the building, whatever. I've called 911 more for them than I have for students over the years that I've been here.
That's interesting.
Are the nurses part of the IC, the incident command structure that we have?
And as someone who was a benefactor of Mary Noel's expertise less than a year ago, it was comforting to know that not only did a friendly face visit my office, but someone who could help me decide whether the additional care was necessary or not, so.
I don't see anyone signaling questions. I, I'd like to end with a, with a big thank you for, well, a more specific thank you really, because my son who had a life-threatening injury was able to come to school and be in a safe space. But, you know, as a teenager, you would completely think teenagers could be left alone, but he was on, he was not allowed to be alone. And he could be in a hospital or he could be at home where I'm literally staring at him. Or he could be in a safe facility with, with staff nurses if he was able to, to be here because of that. And I'm very thankful for that and thank you.
I just want to say that all during the COVID era that we had, Dr. D'Angelo really kept us up on everything that was going on, praising you. And from myself, everybody sitting at this table, a big thank you. I don't know how you do it all. And thank you, Ferencur, thank you. Thank you very much.
But I don't, I don't think we have any other questions. Sal, do you have anything you want to add here?
It won't be seven years before we have them back.
Okay. We all have phones in our office if you have questions, so. We, you know, I, I, I don't want to ask for it tonight, but I am curious. We went through the real deal pandemic exercise here. So at some point, I would love to get feedback back. We haven't, we've all been exhaling for like the last six months, so we haven't done the what, what have we learned exercise. But probably, probably there is room for some policy development around a really intense training exercise that we just went through, right? So maybe before we lose all that organizational knowledge, I would love to, if there's anything to be learned there, put it into policy. Thank you. So we are going to move into superintendent's report and straight into the financial plan review, Sal, or do you have anything else?
No, just that we, we had a beautiful winter concert last week and my, my compliments to the music department for always treating us to a wonderful event. And then I will go over a couple slides in advance of item number three, which is the board's discussion on any other remaining questions of the capital project. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Truddy to do our financial reserve plan presentation and just give me a moment to get that slideshow up.
Okay, so I'll briefly go through the plan. I, I've been here, I think this is going to my 11th year. So when I started here, one of my missions was to put together a kind of a financial reserve plan, long-term planning, looking out 10 years. So I did that. And then seven years ago, the state audit came and they said, you know, one of the things you didn't do is, you know, formally get this approved by the board at the board meeting. So we put that in place for the last seven years. What I enjoyed is I worked with the finance committee over the last seven years to tweak this plan, really get a strong plan. And I was able to use this the last time we issued debt so we could get an upgrade in our ratings. And that saved us, like I said previously, about a million dollars in interest. So to start this out, Sal, if you go the, let's go to the, let's go to the next page, keep going. Let's go to the kind of sum up the, sum up the year here. So if you look balances, fund balances, so this is our reserve savings accounts and, and the, on the left is the reserves we have. And then we meet as a committee and we set parameters years ago. And we kind of tweaked those parameters, how much we, we want in each of those reserves. We were fortunate, even though we had COVID and, you know, we thought we were going to have to use our reserves with our, we got bailed out by the Fed. So we were able to fill up our reserves and really focus on that caboose. So if you look at the caboose reserve, the fourth one down, we put three, almost 3.5 million dollars. We auth, we were authorized for five million, so that was a good start since we have this capital project coming up that we want in February. And then capital reserve three was 3.43, that's already maxed out. We used some of that on the last project. So we were fortunate putting, you know, we really focused on putting all the money into those capital reserves to help the taxpayer out with this next project. So as you can see there, there's almost 6.9 million. In the reserve plan, I did talk about moving money from three reserves, I can keep that here. So workers' comp, unemployment and retirement contribution, ERS, those were noted, noted in our state audit. So they thought those reserves had more money than, you know, that they would want. We don't necessarily agree with that, but I did agree with moving money to help offset the tax impact to our taxpayers. So the goal was, and we talked about this previously and in finance, let's fill up that $5 million reserve with the other reserve to reduce tax impact. So workers' comp, I, I have a motion tonight to move $300,000 from that reserve to capital. Unemployment, 250,000 to capital and then the remaining 1,016,000 from the ERS reserve. It still fits us in our parameters, within our parameters, each of those reserves. And I look back when we got our last rating upgrade and we still should be in position to maintain that grade for the next bond, which is important. Now, if you can go down just one page, let's look. So what I, what, and if you went through the plan, you'll see each of the reserves, you know, the purpose, how they were established, the balances them and the targets, let's go down one more. Let's see, let's go to workers' comp, next one. So you can see the workers' comp here, reserve target five to 10% of payroll. We're at 9% right now. That's the one that I recommended moving money out of to tie into that state audit. So it says on that, that first paragraph or the bottom of that paragraph above, minimize impact on the taxpayer, 1.5 will be moved to fill the 5,300,000 from this reserve. I have the same thing written in the other for the unemployment, 250 and the one, a little over a million in the ERS. Now, if we can go to the last page. So this basically we updated the whole plan, went through the parameters, everything's within parameter. And then, so this is a chart that we've gone through, I think it's 10 years at this district. We used to start out with the yellow graph, which was a base case scenario. I tied it in our budget and I ran out our budget 10 years on different scenarios. Obviously, we wouldn't want to run out of money. As you see, we would do different things depending on different scenarios. But the yellow and then the, the worst case was red and then the greens, best case, everything goes our way. I think we're more in the yellow to red now. I don't see the green as much, but you can still see the next few years, we, we anticipate some surpluses, which I'm going to recommend we still build up some more capital reserves for future projects because we have quite a bit of work to do. But the main thing with this is the concerns I have obviously going forward, inflation, you know, we're at 40-year high with inflation. It's coming back some, but hopefully we can bring that down. And then the stock market obviously did not have a very good year as of now. So those are the two big things that can really impact our, our budgets going forward. But we are still in a very strong position, you know, we're not running out of money anytime soon. So we always kind of look out 10 years and we're still in very good position. One thing I will note though, is if you did actually use these reserves as shown, like in the yellow or the red, after you're out of that, so basically you're filling up your budget, you're balancing your budget with reserves each year. As you go through that, each year you're going to need more and more reserves. And so if you look at the yellow, it's 2930. The next year you'd be out of reserves and then that would be like a 12% tax levy to balance that big loss of reserves. So we would never want to do that. So over years, as we, if we start going down that path, we will make the appropriate reductions or look at the tax levy. You know, one last thing I will say is I didn't raise the tax as much on this. I think best case was 2%. We are being very careful with taxes now, especially with the reassessment, really trying to balance the taxpayer and school needs. So that's the summary of, you know, the, the reserve plan, you know, like I said, we've gone over this seven years. Finance, we go in depth in it and then we bring it to the board. So are there any questions on the reserve plan or what we're doing with the capital? You know, how we're moving money to offset the taxpayer with the capital reserve?
I'm wondering if you could just, how tightly correlated are our fund balances with market movement? Like this is, where, where's, where's the cash that's actually sitting as fund balance socked away?
So we can't invest in the stock market, so schools have to be very conservative. So we, we put that in savings accounts with the bank.
It's all just an interest-bearing.
And it's all backed up, it has to have 100% collateral. So there's no risk to the school district. So can't make as much money, but you're not going to lose the money, it's very safe. So the market, where the market impacts the district is with the TRS, teacher retirement system rates and the employee retirement system rates. They do use a five-year average. So actually, we've had a bad year and this has happened in the past. Sometimes actually the rate goes down a little bit and then it shoots way up. That's when we would have to, you know, our budget would go up a lot to cover those costs. That's where it would really hit us, but we do have some reserves to help offset that.
What's the assumption you used for inflation over the next few years?
So when we, when we do the model, so we do 3% increase in budget on quite a bit of the code, but we look at health insurance, so health insurance, I have a, we look at a graph for the last 15 years. I think we're looking at like 6.5% increase. And then also in the model, we do our teacher retirement, ERS rates, we kind of look at those areas. But in a general inflational factor, we, we would do 3% on, you know, on the other budget items. Even, I know it's higher now, but you know, we trended out over five years.
Your modeling increases in cost, not necessarily like adjustments to nominal, like currency value.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions? I mean, we will go over this every year, but we did, made some changes to the reserve plan this year, right?
Yeah, minor changes. I mean, the big thing is, like I say, we're taking some of our reserves as we're well-established and we're, we're trying to reduce the tax, taxes on the capital project. So it's kind of giving some of the money that we surplus right through the taxpayer and giving it back.
All right, so we're approving this in consensus unless you guys have questions.
Okay. Item number three. For the purpose of expediting the agenda to the conversation that the board may or may choose to have, I'm just going to show a couple of slides. For the, we have posted on our website and attached the agenda, a complete updated version of the PowerPoint related to the capital project. There were no substantive changes to any of the slides that we presented to the board at the, I think it was the October 26 meeting, and then subsequently at the public information hearing on November 28. So what I want to do is I want to fast forward to the one change that we had made in taking a look at the budget. We have now separated the referendum into two propositions. We have proposition number one, and effectively we pulled out the air conditioning filtration system at MED into a separate proposition. So the correction to this slide is we took the air conditioning out of the MED line as an alternative. It made it a standalone item in proposition two. I would like to have Mike, bring Mike back to just review. There have been no changes to this, but review for the purposes of just the record, the two separate capital project costs related to proposition one and two. One, one of the changes we've made here is based on the recommendation from one of the finance committee members and a member of the community. We've added estimates based on higher market values to represent a more accurate portrayal of the community.
So as Sal stated, you know, pretty much the same interest rate, building aid, aidable cost ratios predicated on our debt rating, you know, I'll, I'll get a, I'll be meeting with Moody's Investor Service to go over our debt rating again in the near future when we do this, if we, you know, if this gets passed. But capital project, 18.2 million, as I discussed, there's a motion to move the remaining reserves to get to 8.4 in capital reserves. So net borrowing, 9.7. Debt service, the principal interest on that, average each year, 849,000, the state aid, 691, so the local cost, 157. So typically every district shows $100,000 house. I know that's not very realistic anymore, but we.
Video preview?
So the 100,000, the easy thing, though, is you can see how much that is and multiply it by two, three, four, five, depending on your house to get what that is. So same thing that we showed, 779 for 100,000, 215,57, 2336 for 300. And then, as we stated, the community member, the person of finance committee, because we do have homes, you know, a lot more homes are in the $400,000 range of 500. So 3115 for 438,94 per year for 500. And then air conditioning, same thing, there's no real change in that slide. Local tax impacts more because there's no reserves to get the additional state aid. But we added those extra costs. So $400,000 house is 3743 per year. That's a yearly cost and then half a million dollar house is 4679 per year. So those are the two, two slight updates to the slides.
Just a couple of quick notes before I turn it over to the board for any conversations or questions. There are three resolutions that follow the discussion in the agenda. One will be to, as Mike has mentioned, to move the reserves to the capital project. One is a standard, what we call seeker resolution, and then the actual resolution that the board approves to move forward with the approving the capital project and the propositions to go in front of the voters. Oh, I did have one more side, I'm sorry. The slide was the timeline. So tonight, you would be approving those motions I've just mentioned. By the end of the month, we would submit all the legal notices which are required prior to the vote date. We are, we are actually heavily engaged in the production of the newsletter and the video. We've engaged with the Capital Region BOSI's communication service to assist us with the production of that video. We have a videographer coming to the school district next week. Over the course of two days, we're going to be videoing material, we're going to be interviewing teachers and students for that production of that video. And then we have tentatively set, we firmly want to hold another public information session. And we've tentatively set that for Monday, January 23, where we will have another opportunity to go over all of the project in details for the public prior to asking them to come out and vote on February 14. We are investigating with, we have to talk to bond council tomorrow in terms of whether we have to have a required public hearing regarding the, the reserves, but we will verify that. We don't believe we have to. If we do, we will have that at one of the, prior to one of the board meetings that are previously scheduled. So this is kind of the timeframe that we're, we're, we're under. I just also wanted to make one, one, one note that one of the things that the facilities committee and stakeholders who've been involved in this process have done in this project different than in the past is there are items in this project that represent our firmly held desire to advance our instructional program and make our district future-ready. So with that, I'm going to think we move on to item number three, which is addressing any remaining questions related to your approval of the plan. And Chris is the chair of the facilities committee, and I know you have a facilities committee report as well. I don't know if you want to make any comments at this time.
Well, I think it's clear, I, I think it's clear that you know, certainly I support, very excited about the proposed capital project that we will vote on tonight. I don't think there's anything in particular I need to go over. But I'm anxious to hear if there's any, any further comment or questions.
I also would just want to acknowledge that I'm very grateful to all the folks at SEI Design, but tonight Will Calhoun has joined us in support of, of the project. So we also have Will on hand if, if there's something that Chris or I or Muriel or Mike can't answer regarding the project.
Question. That base, be silly, I don't know. The, can you go back to the timeline? Vote is going to be on February 14. That's Valentine's Day?
Yeah.
Are we going to get more or less voters on that day? Is that what we're going to do? Balloons, maybe roses or carnations fundraiser?
You just volunteered to do that?
No, no, you misunderstood.
My tagline is, if you love the Chatham School District, you'll come out to vote. And this is, you know, we're open from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This is a perfect opportunity on your way to Chatham Grill or to Yanni's or a place of your picking your significant other, then you could quickly come in and, and cast your vote. No better date night. We're going to set a new trend.
Okay. Well, this isn't, there's no motion required at this exact moment. It sounds like we don't have specific questions. I am certainly excited to get to the public awareness part of this campaign. We've had several comments to the tune of, can you tell me more about X, Y, or Z? But that can wait for your planned awareness campaigning in January and February.
And just an open call, Mike and I are already scheduled to visit the Lions committee meeting in January. If there's any organizations that would like myself or partner in crime here, Mike, to present to during the day, the evening, they simply need to reach out to us. But we're really counting on the video, the newsletter, our website to play an important role in the dissemination of information. And just a reminder, you can easily get to all of this information. Upper right-hand corner of the website takes you to dedicated pages for the capital project.
The, we're going to do a paper newsletter, is that the plan?
We, we have likely a six-page newsletter planned. We're working on the layout right now.
Okay. And it's, this is going to be separate from the annual newsletter, right?
Yes. Yeah, this will, this will go out. Our hope is that we'll have it out by mid-January to give voters several weeks to digest the information and, you know, have time to come to a public information session or a board meeting prior to the vote.
Do you know if we've done newsletters for past capital projects?
Absolutely, every, everyone. And if you recall, in the board drive, I think under capital projects, we've archived all of those newsletters for the last 10 or 12 projects in there.
They've been coincident with our annual.
Not always.
Not all of them, some of them?
Some, our last one was coincident to the annual vote, but several have been. Districts have, you know, generally you see, you'll see the fall or early spring, or if you're close enough to May, then it makes sense to, to wait to May. We've had a couple in the area or a couple in the state this last week alone. Voorheesville just went out with a 20-something million. They were successful in passing that and a school up north that we just looked at because the person who's helping us produce the video helped them do it. And they were successful in passing their bond vote too on December 6.
What, what do you have in mind?
Yeah, if you could help me with the contact information.
Go ahead.
And I don't need, we don't need to obligate the board. I mean, I'm more than welcome to go, I'm, I'm more than willing to go. Oh, yeah. And I also, the last time that I was here, we also went to the retired teachers group that invited us to, to join them. So if, if any of the board members could help me with contact information for those groups, I'd be more than happy to, to go if the newsletter is available. PowerPoint presentations to, I think the more people that we are able to inform on our desire to, to bring this district up to.
I would I think I would love to get some informational signage that we could lend out to community events so that we don't have to be there.
Thank you for that. SEI is helping us, everything was kind of predicated on tonight's approval. But once tonight's approval, assuming everyone's in agreement, SEI design is helping us with quite a bit of the collateral in terms of foam court boards and these, like you see at conventions, you banners and stuff like that, which will have some floor plans and some essential components of the capital project. So we can look to get some of those made and put those up in strategic areas, businesses that might be interesting.
Outdoor display or businesses, but some lendables or like fundraisers and stuff that are happening, if they'll display them, we should fund them out.
That's, that's a great idea. PTO events, that kind of thing, too.
All right. All right. With that, I think, Sal, anything else on your report?
Nope.
We are into board member comment. I don't have anything new this week. Does anyone else have a board comment? Okay. Student representative report. Over to you, Gracie.
I'm going to turn my mic on this week, so that's improvement. So the first thing, we are looking at doing another like school dance and something kind of like powder puff. We're looking at late January for that. We're thinking it's going to be a volleyball game. And so we're thinking that'll come with some sort of activity day fundraiser. And then there will be a spirit week to accompany that. So that we're thinking that's going to be late January, but we're still kind of in the early planning process of that. To update on the off-campus launch policy, student government is going to be meeting with Dr. D'Angelo and Mr. Thorson sometime, hopefully soon, to go over like the second draft and any changes that need to be made. And we're hoping to be able to implement this during the second semester. Auditions are over for the musical, we're doing Rama Mia. And rehearsals have begun. Yesterday, we had our first read-through. And then opening will be Friday, March 10 with shows Saturday and Sunday. Or Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Krispy Kreme, which is one of our biggest fundraisers, was just completed. We finished collecting donations. Deliveries will be on Monday, the 19th. And then currently we're still waiting to do the final tally for how much was made. That should be it.
The proceeds from the Krispy Kremes will fund our new AEDs in schools. If the Powerpuff game could be on any night except the Tuesday, I know there's a couple of board members who would greatly appreciate.
I will do my best.
Although we threw you a curveball because we have a public information session on a Monday, so.
As someone who will probably be not playing, because if it's volleyball, volleyball players can't play, but if it's a coach, I also would like it to not be on that Tuesday, so.
Any questions? Okay, I think we are ready to move on into board committee reports. We're going to start with facilities, although we may have popped a bubble on that one, Chris. I'll just reiterate the meeting that we held recently since our information session. We certainly took the comments of the board and also of the community members that were able to attend. And, you know, confirmed what we're recommending to the board tonight is unchanged, you know, obviously with the addition of some additional financial information. And we did discuss the specific need of another public information session in January, which Sal didn't mention is going to be on January 23. And that's it for the report. Yeah, I could certainly report on that. You know, we obviously went through the presentation that Mike did tonight. There was some minor requests for some rewording of concerning, I think. Maybe, Mike, you can expand on that, but there was minor rewording.
Just some of the, some of the sentence structure, we haven't looked at this and you know, we've made some changes and we kind of meet it as a group sometimes and change some of the structures. I had Adam Charbonneau, our PR person, go through and I said, you know, to check the grammar, any, any words you think that don't make sense. You know, looking at it. So he did some minor corrections on that, which was nice to get an upgrade on that.
But as we did a little bit tonight, you know, we did look over and discuss the reserves and how those being reallocated. The committee was very competent in Mike's presentations. Hey. Does anyone have any questions there before we move on into business finance agenda? Okay. As we went over the reserve plan changes already tonight, R27, here is all that the Board of Education authorized the transfer of $250,000 from the unemployment reserve, 300,000 from the workers' compensation reserve, and 1,1016 from the retirement contribution reserve to be reallocated to the capital reserve. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And R27, motion to approve the seeker resolution for the capital project that we've been discussing. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Questions or comments on R28?
I have one question. I'm looking at the site work portion of it. It says create outdoor classroom area at middle school. Is that, I thought that was here. Okay. There was another one in middle school as well.
Yeah, that's, that was in a contingency, right? Yeah. So we need to approve the seeker in case we decide to.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. I just, I was just.
Yeah. In case we're able to fund that. Typically, we don't do a follow-up seeker, right? It's just the one. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm going to move into R29. It resolved that the Board of Education, the Chatham Central School District, in a special meeting of qualified voters of the school district, be convened on Tuesday, February 14, 2023, for the two propositions regarding the capital project. Can I have a motion?
Second. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going to move on into consensus agenda. I see that we've put a name on our teacher on special assignment as an SEL support. Does anyone have any questions about that or anything else here in consensus?
The only comment I have is to welcome our new library director, Amanda Merk. Mike and I are very pleased that process has gone very smoothly. She lives in Great Barrington and she was quickly able to get her New York State Public Library Director's certification. And we're working with civil service, we worked with civil service as well. And so that's, that's going very smoothly. Hopefully I'm not jinxing ourselves and she will start at January 3rd. And, and thank you to Mike, who's been over there quite frequently through the transition, working with the temporary person that we have, who's only there 20 hours a week. And we have a small gap between her leaving this week or next and the beginning of the year, but we'll, we'll be able to tide ourselves over.
Yeah, I was about to ask about that gap, but it's like two or three weeks or something.
Mike, you've worked with personnel that are there and we'll have somebody who will kind of be the point person. Mike is intimately familiar with the Dewey, Dewey Decimal System now.
Do we still use that?
I don't think so. I'm dating myself.
R30, be it resolved, the Board of Education accept consensus agenda J through L as rate.
So moved.
Can I have a second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have any items for future agenda other than the informational signage which I mentioned. We're going to go into awareness campaign mode of capital project. And I, maybe just a quick clarification, I think we're, we're not ready to talk about any of the phase ones yet, right? But the, as a reminder to the board members, because we had a question about pre-K for phase one. The timeline for that will be.
So we are meeting, we were going to meet in January in anticipation of putting in our grant proposal. But we, there could be a potential second funding opportunity through some excess funds of the state. So we're meeting again this week, I believe, to accelerate that. But we, we're looking to have a September 23 start. And that means that shortly after the beginning of the year, we will be putting information out in terms of surveying and program information.
When do you think we'll have a programmatic overview on that?
End of January? Probably one of the earlier phase ones. You probably won't see other phase ones until the beginning of the budget process, which will be in February. But we, we certainly need to do a board update on that program by the end of January.
Okay, I think that covers the question that I got. Anyone else have items for future agenda? All right, with that, we are into second public comment. This is an opportunity for stakeholders of the Chatham Central School District to speak on any issue affecting the district. We'll give anyone interested in speaking a couple of minutes. Do we still have any digital?
Still have two, two members that have hung in there with us.
If anyone online would like to speak, they can raise a digital hand. If you're in a room, come up to the podium and sign in. I'll just wait one moment here. No digital hands?
No digital hands.
Okay, with that, I think I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. We, we don't have, does anyone have any executive content that they need to discuss? I don't have anything. Okay.
Second.
All right. With that, we are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
Use the gavel.